Sir, as you know. Stayed by the positive. They might. Right. Yeah. All girls, that's all. Still only one I have to do. Downstairs, just be able to, you'll reach out to your guy. All standing. For that, I will see Alvin, I rise up to sit. Mr. Shergill, I'm seeing you. Cute. I don't worry, it is very important enough. It's how you know. One of my insights. A mental person. A lot of things, you know, for instance, I might see. Scary. I did. Gee, that's this year. Their courage is strong, so I thought we should. That's why I'm out with the hand. It's plus one seven. So, I'm trying to find. Quiet. Just. Trying to see. So.
Morning.
Morning.
At night thirty. Working at two in the evening and call door. And.
Mr. Ockham.
Here.
Mr. Stansker.
Here.
Mr. Minneman.
Here.
Mr. Wayans.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Mark.
Here. Thank you, all President and House members, please stand for the aisle. Please, some of them, but. What is for a heavenly father? Guide us today if we discuss the affairs of the citizens of Chaboy County. Help us to make wise decisions on their behalf for the good of all. This is a great learning. Um.
I believe we need to see us. I, I see someone there. Mr. Murray, well, for what she's saying is. National. Putting on. That's more. Parenting, careful warning.
You should also.
Yes.
You should remember.
Yes.
You should know about.
Yes.
You should know, Bertie.
Yes.
You should know, Brian.
Yes.
You should know, Stansky.
This is very good. But it always can be pretty intense considering that. Like the term I gave, if you can see that heading. We have a house. That's. The feeling.
Yes.
You should know, New York.
Yeah.
You should know, Brian.
Yes.
You should know, Wallace.
Yeah.
You should know, Olson.
Yes.
You should know, Brian.
Yes. Thanks, the board. You're down to item six, three, seven, these comments, and one like for the rest of the boards, please, to throw to the podium. Page your name, you had three minutes.
My name is Dale Reeder. To Dale, where you're done in township. And I just here to thank the county commissioners for those supporting the concept of a log park here in town. On behalf of many people who made financial contributions to make it happen, uh. And thank you very much. Also, I need to say. I've had the opportunity to work very closely with Chuck Lawson on this project, and you're very fortunate to have him. He is a combination of. Two things, one, he works hard to make the US possible. And then when it is appropriate for him to tell me no, he's not afraid to do that. And that's an admirable combination for the ministry, so. And on behalf of many people, it's particularly thinking, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. We thank you for your team.
Good morning. My name is Cory Pepper, and I am a neighbor of the work, and I'm also living in Benton Township, I know the last one. I'm the new substance misuse prevention specialist for outdoor prevention. My assignment is to work here in Shippensburg County, to work hard to help us all live in a healthy place. I look forward to being of service, as you have been, to all of us, and I welcome any guidance or direction from you. That might help us all live better.
All right. Little scouts, uh, to Shippensburg and Grant County. Uh. We want to rise today and, uh. See, that's my very. A one of the pleasures with. Our city and county government. Um. This, uh. Run off that we have from our. A record setting snowballs that we had. Right now, you have one half of the city she wore me underwater. I have, uh. Dealt with this city. City district, they need to go on town same, because I'm not a, uh. A millionaire owner of property outside of town. Uh. I've dealt with three different strange missionaries. As they call me while. Uh. Being petition for a, uh, range, they very well, I have talked to three. Rank member who we did step. Those industry of the other, one, uh, used the position as a subject going toward over separated. Uh, this not will be, uh, sending that as to city avoiding any county's warning. You do. We send you guys to these positions to work on every half. Now. Uh, you do that key drains that need to be, uh, addressed with the eastern solo drain. And. Uh, they are completely clogged up. That need be drained, then cleaned up, uh, on account of office emergency anything. Quite frankly, you'd be worried. I'm sorry, but you need to worry. So that, uh, if I had, you know, office emergency, and I knew. That that was going on, I would be on his little tiny thing, you are giving us taking care of. You have a problem in this county, and you should be taking care of, and you dress up and you take care of. Not to be, uh, some, uh, pardon, pardon my French, but some college rap boy. Um, uh, doing, uh, you know, just sitting there looking, doing. Uh, we need action on that east side of town. And now. I've been tired of being given a run around from the city she avoided. Our county leaders are basically letting the city she avoided. Uh, flood the east side of town. And knowing that there's dangers in that water that is in that, uh, that flooding us right now. One is going on our drain, our, I don't know, our private well. It's like a combination from that old city dump. Those city dumps on east, eastern avenue. It has the same chemicals in it, it's underneath that paper mill that is supposed to be, uh, remedied. Uh, because. Just, it's, it has this arsenic cyanide buried in it. Properties of, uh, paper waste. And yet. Where is our office emergency? Where is the county leadership? Where is our senior leader? I've addressed it, I've addressed it with, uh, uh, my representatives here in, uh, Vane. Basically, getting no answers. I need answers. I need to get results soon. Our properties are becoming, are unusable. Move the property as a point of thirty, twenty-three and East Avenue. That poor guy cannot use this property because, or he can't even review it because it's flooded. Because of, of the inhabitants of this thing. And, um, I am, uh, you know, that, uh. Uh, city services, county services that are in the, I mean, in a trouble, which is hard for jumping. That's, that's about a problem. And I'll go back to a couple of more comments at seven fifty.
Thank you, Louis. Moving on. Special visitor department report, the probate court, you hear the honorable. Girl business. All right, Sid.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Well, good morning, everyone. Uh, I have a tendency to be long-winded, so I'm gonna work really hard to be quick for you guys, and with a lot of people here and. There's more important business to be dealt with, so, uh, this is my two thousand twenty-four annual report. Uh, I'll start on. I guess page. One, which is just an overview of our case load for the two thousand twenty-four year. Um, we were down in almost every area, uh, in summary, pretty financially, which really is a good thing. Um, the one exception to that is our mental health cases, uh, which you scroll down just a little bit, yeah. Next one, I believe, uh, is conservatorships. And I think mentals, mental health are next. Yep, there we go. Um, one of the big issues that we have, and I'll allude to it in more specificity later. Is with the addition of the, uh, new McLaren behavioral health units. Uh, we handle hearings for out of county. Uh, individuals who are hospitalized there and require, uh, court hearings. Um, the prosecutor's office handles those, and we have to appoint an attorney, uh, to represent the individuals who are hospitalized. Um, I might look over now while I'm on it. Uh, the county with which the individual came from does cover the cost of the, uh, of the appointed attorney. Uh, I think we had, I think we had sixteen of those in twenty twenty-four. Um. A lot of those become evidentiary hearings, which require testimony and are. I wouldn't call them significant in length, but they are a much more in-depth hearing. Um, we have doctors that testify, uh, and, and whatnot, so, um, that would be the one area that we've had a spike. Uh, in our case load, but overall, uh, we're down quite a bit, which again is, is a positive thing. Um, as, as the board knows, our court deals with, uh, a lot of the at-risk individuals, we have people who need a guardianship, we have juveniles who. Uh, are being abused or neglected, uh, or in those types of cases, so, uh, or states, if you could pass, and obviously, you know, so you dispute as to. Um, how the property should be divided, so, uh, a dip in the case load is, is not a bad thing, but. Uh, I also want to point out as far as the mental health cases go. We have had, uh, a huge fight also in our, um. The number of cases we're receiving locally with individuals who are suffering from mental health. Issues who need a mental health pickup order, uh, either from a law enforcement agency. Or a concerned family member or neighbor who's reporting, um, concerning behavior as it relates to individuals, so. Uh, you know, they were somewhat rare, I feel like, and I only go back to twenty twenty-one on this data, but. Um, my first couple of years, I felt like we were clearly rare, uh, I feel like we're getting, you know, one every week or every other week now. Um, so they're becoming much more common. Why that is, I don't know, um, but it's seemingly, uh, 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 becoming more of an issue, so. Um, as far as our caseload, I guess that kind of summarizes that. Uh, the next thing I was gonna go to, I guess, Jeff, would be page, uh, five, which are the financials, uh, of the department. Um, we, uh, our budget, allotted budget for last year was, uh, three point, uh, almost three point five million dollars, it'd be the next, next, uh, page. There you go. Was about three point five million dollars. Uh, we were, uh, we spent about seventy-three percent of that, which would be about two point five million. Uh, one of the things that, things that I think is really important to note about our department is of the two point five million dollars we spent last year. Uh, one point four, well, almost one point five million dollars of that. Was paid from outside of Chaboy County through the childcare fund, uh, through grants, uh, or other, uh, um, means that we have secured to pay for that. So with that being said, last year, our total, uh, expenditure as it from, directly from Chaboy County was about, uh, one point one million. Uh, that covers eleven employees, our compass program, our choices program, um, all the other services that we offer, we have, uh, offer busing students to get in school. Uh, through straight fusion ride, um, we pay for that, uh, so. Considering the volume of, of employees, the, the amount of services we provide, uh, we're, we're pretty proud of, of, uh, we have. Our budget is only at one point one million, uh, for, for all that we, we do. Um, and then I'll, I'll, I guess it won't play people yet, but I'll flow to page back up, page three, Ben, Jeff. You would, that's four, then one more, three, just some areas of, of emphasis, uh, for, for areas of issue, perhaps, I guess would be a more, uh, accurate term. For our, our court. Uh, the first one I referenced in the report was guardianship shortages, and I know Commissioner Wallace, unfortunately, uh, not, not you, but you were there for one, uh, recently. And, uh, we are really, really having a difficult time, uh, finding guardians for individuals, in fact, we have one, uh, scheduled for today. For a young man who's developmentally disabled. And I don't believe we have a guardian for that individual, and, uh, the individual is a little bit. Difficult, and has had some, some issues. And, uh, I, I don't know exactly what course we're gonna take, but we have no. Uh, guardians available or willing to take that case, so. Um, and, and, and obviously, you saw firsthand how difficult it is to get one, fortunately. It, it, it worked out in that case, but, um, it's a huge issue, it's an issue, uh, particularly in rural Michigan. Um, I feel like in the cities, there are guardianship. Uh. I'm calling businesses, but they actually are in the business of being guardian, public guardians. Uh, we don't have that here, uh, there is one out of Wayne City that will do something for us, but, um, as far as individual guardians, though, we're really short. Uh, I, the juvenile detention bed issue, I. I gotta confess, I prepared this prior to, uh, the, that I know has become sort of a hotbed issue. Uh, I prepared this report long before I knew that that was gonna be, uh, something hot topic, but I, it is something that I, I should address. Um, the reason there's such an issue right now is because about a year and a half ago, the state changed. The law, raise the age, so the age of majority used to be seventeen. Now it's eighty. So that's increased. Excuse me, the number of juveniles now that are coming through the juvenile court system. On top of that, the state has closed or reduced their involvement in housing juveniles. And so what you have is you have less beds, more kids. Let's see, one second. I was screaming at a bunch of teenage girls last night, I voiced a little. Yeah, basketball game, so I was. Yelled. Shoot, we did, we did. Excuse me, anyway. So that's part of the problem, it's really a statewide problem, um, we've got some pretty significant situations, we just can't find beds for kids. Um, and so, um, that's, that's an issue, uh, part of the problem too is, you know, um. Uh, the Sioux Tribe has historically been a landing spot for us, it's closed, Roscommon was a landing spot for us that was closed. Roscommon, uh, closed. Um, the Sioux Tribe now is very selective in picking, they won't pick. Low risk or no risk individuals, um, and so that's really become not an option for us, so. I believe the closest facility we have right now is Day City. We're sending kids to Jackson, um, pretty long distances, so it is a pretty significant across the board. Excuse me. Um. We, uh, this is the first year we have a pre-adjudication officer. Um, that's been really affecting schools, I'm very positive about it, uh, Tim Pinkfider is serving in that position. Um, that's through a grant we received from the state, and the goal is to reduce the number of juvenile cases, juvenile petitions that we get. So Tim will meet with families, the children, um, as they have appendants issued or inforred donations at school. And try to reduce the number of petitions that we receive in our juvenile cases. Excuse me, I mentioned the behavioral health unit already, so I'll skip that. And then the last thing I'll mention as far as this goes, that I'm really excited about, is we were contacted by the state court administrator's office, uh, about a month ago. And they want, uh, me and Megan Fedlin and, uh, Kyle Culbertson from our office to do a webinar. Draw the courts on our compass program and to, uh, something they've been hearing a lot about, there's been a lot of feedback, we've had, uh, several counties come. Watch how we do it, I learn our program. I think there's one county that's trying to implement something similar, and so the webinar we're gonna do is going to educate. Uh, the courts across the state on what we did, how we do it. You know, our pillars, uh, how we get kids in, how we manage it, our, you know, relationship with Chaboy County Schools. New Lake School, Wolverine Area Schools, and, and, uh, the program, so. I, I, I guess, uh. It's an honor, um, also, we're really excited to do that. And then I'll kind of end with compass, I know that's always a, a, uh, thing that the board is always interested in, um. We had, uh, twenty-six individuals in the program in twenty twenty-four, uh, some points have cried for us, uh, prior to coming to compass, our juveniles. Had an average GPA of point seven four, so that's probably about D, between a D plus and a B. Uh, while in our program, their average GPA was two point three eight, so that's a C plus, that's a jump. Um. Yeah, this is one that I'm very passionate about, average hours absent prior to coming to compass was seventy-six. Point six seven hours per kid. While at compass, we reduced it down to about twenty-six hour, or twenty-six classroom hours per kid, so that's. Uh, what, uh, being sick, uh. Four to five days absent per kid, so that's, that's, that's good. Um, another huge stat for us is the average credits per semester, they should be getting about three credits. Per semester before coming to compass. The averaging one point six seven, so our compass kids, on average, were not on pace to graduate. Uh, we up that, in fact, to catch them up, we do some credit recovery work, uh, after hours with the kids. And the average credit per kid was three point six seven, so they're above the three point. That's the target. Uh, we had six kids who were in our program who graduated in twenty twenty-four, which we released all of. Um, and just, I'll, I know it's on your sheet, I'll go through it really quickly, some of the things that we did was we took. A group of kids to Kirtland Community College for a campus tour, we took them to North Central Michigan College for a campus tour. We do a significant amount of community service projects throughout the unity, including but not limited to, we sort pants for the Chaboy booster, so all the. The can bin that's sitting out here, uh, our duty service kid or our compass kid sort those out, and the money goes back, and we bought beautiful bleachers for Chaboy County Schools. Uh, we clean up the rails trails in Wolverine, Indian River, Top of the Bee, and Chaboy. Uh, we, um, clean the children's trail in town, we work at the fairgrounds, we, uh. Uh, will frequently be the empty Chaboy and Indian River Recycling Center, can we clean up? Uh, we ring bell for the Salvation Army during the holiday season. Uh, we, uh, were at the Volbeek, the beer cleanup, and then also painted some, uh, structures that they had at the Volbeek in Indian River. Uh, we cleaned up the Top of the Bee library, and then, uh, the Chaboy County Area Schools had a summer cleanup, and we got our kids there doing that work. Uh, some of the extracurricular, non-traditional educational programming we offer our kids include, uh, MSU does an adulting, uh, one-on-one class. Uh, we do teen intervene from Founder Bay, which is substance abuse related programming. Uh, we have Corey Hedner, when Michigan State Police comes in, talk to the kids about some things. Uh, we do outdoor prevention classes after school tutoring, substance abuse counseling, we offer yoga. I should start going now.
Yeah.
I did, I had to use a little flexibility there, I think, older, I am anti-back, right, anyway, we need to start that perhaps. Uh, uh, we have an army recruiter comes in annually, we do health choices, uh, we, uh, go to the Chaboy Library Art Class. We do counseling, and we offer some of this, so that's a little bit about our compass program. That's all I have, uh, to present to you guys today, any questions, any comments, any, anything else?
Your Honor, um. You said, son, something to your son, oh, so, but the guy. Um. You suppose the reason we don't have, you know.
Guardians?
Guardians, thank you. The reason we don't have them is going to pay them.
Long time, you have eighty-three dollars a month.
No.
Times, eighty-three dollars a month, times, I, you know, I mean, I, I. Says. You think, no, well, no, it can be a challenging job working with some of the individuals, I mean, they're dealing with dementia, Alzheimer's, uh, some of them are violent, some of them. You know, they're not allowed, some have criminal history, some of, I mean, they're very, uh, you have very challenging, um, endeavor. And pay someone eighty-three dollars a month is, is really insulting, the people that we have. I mean, they've punched their ticket to heaven, I mean, really, they have, I mean, it's, it's hard work, and, and they're, they're warriors, and we are so grateful for them. Uh, we've offered classes and training for people to. Um, learn about the responsibilities of being a guardian. And we had some people come, um, mostly those family members of people, you know, a daughter whose mother is beginning to. Maybe deteriorate mentally and, um, you know, they, so, uh, we haven't had a lot of, you know, people come up and say, hey, I'm kind of a guardian, and. A public guardian, if you will, so. Then that's the problem, I mean, it's, it's eighty dollars a month, it's. It's something.
Public, yes.
No. Yeah, and it's all, I mean, for us, and it's trying to, you know, throw up these, find placements at a placement forum, that you could be in a facility or whatever it is.
Is that throughout the state of Michigan?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the bigger issue, and I, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I think it's more a world issue. Because in the urban area, I think there are, you know, there are, uh. I think you can become a business, like company, or, yeah, or they specialize in that, and that's, that's their business. And they take care of it, whereas up here, I think that's their population base probably. Who can support that? And as a result, we have a bunch of individuals, I shouldn't say a bunch, we have a few individuals who are willing to do that, really, I mean, let's be honest. Community service work, really, um, so, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the issue.
The other thing, that is, you know, Michigan Works has a bird place done, and I think it's a nice place there in Little Jay's and Geller, I mean, that's coming up, and I'm, I'm, you got, uh. This should be more tough. Craving all the kids in a bus to, you know, a bird place, you can't do this.
And we work with Michigan Works, they do things like, and that's one of our, you know, and Meg, and I got Megan's here, um, she does. And we work with Michigan Works, they do things like, and that's one of our, you know, and Meg, and I got Megan's here, um, she does an incredible job, uh. They do things like help, uh, some of our kids get their driver's license, because it's hard and it's expensive. And, um, they'll assist with things like that, so absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions?
Anything, uh. Uh, is that the same reason that, that you got the issue?
Um, what, what is the issue there, you're right, I mean, would I say my opinion?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I just think that there's more kids, there are less facilities, I think it's hard to find help. Uh, number one, I think the other issue is that. Because there are more kids and less facilities, and the state's not involved. The, the more, either the county or the private sector facilities. Can you choose it? Because there's such a demand for it, they can say, we're gonna take the easy kids. And really, that's where the problem lies, is, you know, the easy kid, we can, we, if we have to. We can find alternatives to place in that, I mean, we can do, you know, I can say, okay, we can't find that, uh, you gotta do community service. Or, you know, we can, we can make that happen, the issue becomes where we have. A violent offender. And those are the kids that the facilities don't want, because there's, it's like I said, there's so many kids, so many towns in need of this. That they can kind of be choosing and say, uh, we don't want that kid, because we can take this kid who has no, no history. Of violent behavior, or is low risk, is not gonna create drama in our, our facility, and therefore, we can. They can kind of pick and choose, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, and I don't blame them, I mean, if I was running a facility, you know, that's the way I would want it, I mean, I, I, so it's, it's nobody's fault, I don't think. Um, but that's kind of the, the, the issue that's really starting to. Last year, I, I, uh, I remember it was twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-four. Might have been late twenty twenty-three, I don't remember when, you sent a kid to Illinois. Um, that we had a kid this year that we were about to have to send him to Texas. Because it was violent and we, the VHS got involved, VHS actually spent. How many days, two? What?
Four days.
Four days. With their staff having to monitor it. Because there was no facility that we could locate through the Department of Health and Services or our office for the kids, we have secured a bed in Texas. Luckily, we were able to s- sort of. I guess the parents didn't want the kid back because his behavior was so extreme. And what we did is we kind of circumvented it, and the prosecutors obviously filed an abuse and neglect petition on the parents. And then we were able to get the kid into a homeless facility in Detroit. And then from there, we were able to get him into, uh, Pine Rest. And he spent a significant amount of time in a, in a mental health hospital, so we were kind of able to avert sending him to Texas. Uh, but, um, and that's sort of the issue we got, and some of the issues is like, what do we, what do we do? Uh, and it's tough, and, and I know that the, 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 you know, the oldies, it'd be a tough situation, I guess, everyone is thinking that. Um, but at some point, I mean, the county, we're, we're gonna have to, you know, have to figure something out, wherever we go, I don't know. But it's, 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 it's a tough situation, so, anything else?
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, guys.
And more than you can give, but to the point that you're seeing your peaceful, like, this is all we need, innovation. Is why a lot of people are stepping back from, because of for juvenile, we need pairs, it's not corporate, it's seven, it's changing others, seven, you know, we just made it. So difficult, they don't speak, and just liability.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, it's, it's a mess, I mean, and I think every, I mean, you go to, you know, judges conferences, or you're on the judges forums. And all of them are kind of playing about the same things, it's like, boy, you're this guy, you know, and so luckily. You know, one of the things that we've dived on, I've been able to do is like, I'm, I'm, you know, fairly close with the Emmett Charlevoix. Family Court Judge. And there's been a time or two where she's got a kid who she needs a bed for, and she'll call me, and we'll pull one out who's. Maybe not as high risk as hers, my birthday death, so we, we try to like, you know. Work it together and try and solve problems or plug holes, um, but, and that's sort of what we do, so. I really appreciate your times.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, so now you're going to, like, over twenty-five thousand, now we're at twenty-five thousand, in addition. January have three pays, so salary are up, and they're looking normally higher, and so. Revenues for January twenty-five, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and eighteen cents. I spent here the year ago at fifty-seven thousand, sixteen, I have fifty months. Or an increase of three hundred and seventeen thousand, three seventy, and sixty-seven cents. After I paid out the revenues that I needed back, but I need to make it there, well, it's, 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 or, so. They expended through one million four twenty-one, twenty-eight now, thirty cents, as compared to the year ago, or. One million one and two, sixteen now, twenty-seven, seventy-six. Or up, I mean, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, we could be now, and that would be, that's what we're wrong. So just wrapping that in, okay, uh. Um, the cash somewhere like on the other report, uh, general fund. Cash of the game here in twenty-five, eleven million, six hundred and eight, about ten, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, six cents. As compared to the year ago of eleven million, twenty-six. Twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, two cents, or an increase of five hundred and ninety-one dollars, twenty-five, eighty-nine, four. Uh, the total funds, thirty-four, ninety-four, seventy-five, five sixty, ninety-eight, sixty cents, as compared to the year ago, according on nine. Four hundred and seventy-eight, five hundred and eighty, now, thirty-four cents, twenty, fifty, two, ninety, ninety-six thousand, we said, fifteen, we said, I.
When you refer to the additional, you can.
Well, I mean, the additional cash?
Yeah.
I was looking at that, a lot of it is in the roadside, though, he just, he just told me, honey. Um, so I don't know, there are a lot of projects that I've been looking at. And some of the two is annually, um last year found out, uh already, because the money. Taxes that we issued in January, if they, if they, if somebody needed to be paid, they came back. And so some of that, that went into the, lovely town report last year, so it's.
Most important, we see it in fact, is true.
Michigan Minnick? Michigan Williams? Michigan Wallace? Michigan Osmond? Michigan Marklin?
That's what was carried, six, seven.
We gone through the administrator, he's toward ninety-nine and one eleven, right? Paid on a couple items for the city fourth project, uh depending on the H track, my wall, painting, oh no. Possibly, you know, where, that's a particular project. And definitely the the way of the inspiration. Which the town, but it got to be. For the Superior Project under Israel. Uh thank you, Dave, for our communities, because March seventeenth, there are two P I's. And for the um, then they want an agreement, so we did leave with the other counties, uh Charlotte Lloyd. And I tell you, and you discussed our manual agreement for nineteen ninety-one. A couple items that stir up for the visit, and if the uh. Hours, I am very established general fund allowance limits. Uh right now, CCU number one, building coverage of fund down policy, and used to establish that, but the uh thirty-six percent of the fund down. Uh center officers, they clarify the duties of the fiscal agents. Uh right now, the counties over the years have uh taken turn at being the fiscal agent. And the news right now, what needs can be handled, I don't know, I think. Uh the blood may be, it can be held by counties, and then a third later. Probably with the audit cycle, because they have the personally, for firm, help not beyond, you know, audit sector. So they have that contract there, in obviously separate. And then the last is to establish a, under plan answers, is a five-year capital improvement schedule. Uh counties and municipalities are required to know the five-year plan, details for the planning commission. As created by the. Municipals boards, uh this uh may be implemented in C C number one to identify the capital projects. Of that, then we'll go into budget cycle, where each county will approve the application for. Um for the projects, and then the the application may be back to the island board. For that separate minister, we we actually need to select on their contracts. We expect, so they'll go on the Charlotte Lloyd's Board here, uh probably next month. And Emmett, we themselves, we were ready for Charlotte Lloyd's initial review. Uh they brought up some issues, they're concerned, just. If you have any answering questions?
General, that's good.
I saw, you know, we got an answer.
Solid six to three.
So hopefully address the long-term concern, uh Charlotte was brought up, it don't, he's been one of the too much losers. The pre-education for the past software projects, we should establish the capital improvement schedule. Place the two will begin of the project. Unless the fixed fee is too too high, of them, the depth of that team, or it's just an increase, it should cover the areas and.
Moving on, the committee reports, any committee reports?
Uh Chairman, uh that's in cities, it's immediate, it's the working out. That can spur me out, and it would be held at the chateau. I mean, point four, last year was our first thing. I defended by three hundred thousand in a. There's a whole set of election, we want to get in this year. You know, they were trying to, and now for the north commission on, I see they're both.
Um the soil conservation, Mr. Fish Boy, you had an interesting story. Do you have it online? Uh see the Fish Boy dot org? The gun duty, oh goodness, head of line. Forty twenty-three, fifty-five or five or five. I'm Grandma, former civil.
Uh thank you, you're uh. I've been involved actually, they've taught us all, we'll be taking anybody. Um but maybe see later, you're uh going to be filmed. Right, you can have a lunch, you want a brush sketchy, you make a thirty gauge, and you just get silver mist, baby. If you, if you're not filled with delicacy within thirty days, the sketchy, it probably will call a special election, the Phil Lake is. Uh then I can correct you, uh my mom, I think we're too close to the nail auction, we break any kind of election, I'm saying, correct? And so because we have certain uh dates, the sketchy allows us to to have elections, I think the. The first available election would be in August, and and so the problem. Well, that is, if if you're waiting till August to do a special election. Then that district is unrepresented until until August starts. So I would encourage you to to make the appointment, uh and so, we see through what what would happen. Is if a commissioner wants to uh appoint a candidate A to the children's. If the motion is made, then there is a second, when there will be a vote on that motion. Takes four affirmative votes to cast that motion. Three to three is a is a tie, to put the motion that is not passed. So number one, if there is no second, if the vote doesn't receive the four affirmative votes, then. It follows you over for another motion, your point can be. And you go, you get a same process, needs a second, needs four affirmative votes. So yes, generally, the process you should follow, uh I I heavily, you're doing a Phil Lake is it?
This will not be a point for your term.
If it's special or not, so.
Well, I'm hoping, you know, if you accept, this person will go. To kill eleven November, a four, four, this is a. Don't talk about a little over a year, this point is a little over a year.
And then there's the launching, uh the program council of the other time.
Right, we're not appointing someone for the full forty years.
Well, we appointed, if if the appointment is made, then they they serve until, I think, under a twenty twenty-six election.
So all the candidates can run. Here's twenty twenty-six.
Pretty questions, thank you. Anything else?
You're making your motion to appoint, make your thought about.
Is there a discussion that I could, with most?
If we can be accepted, so that motion is.
Support? Support?
Now we got a discussion.
We're counting the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I've filed. Before I started, I've got the, I'm possibly in the modern contract, I'm using. And I, I had my feelings down last night, realized this, this morning. I guess I'm just gonna read it, because it does today, I can handle it. Not missing. Firstly, I feel like the importance and relevance of this appointment has been blown way out of proportion. This is an appointment for one commissioner, for just a little over a year. In the twenty twenty-sixth general election, the people of District Five will get to choose who they want to represent, and that's as it should be. The primaries for this election are only months away, so it is my hope that the serious candidates contact our board. Begin that process of getting on the ballot. In this time, I have heard comments that if Mr. Claremont is appointed, he will take over the board. Or Claremont Newman want to take over the board together. I have heard the comment that the commissioners had set up a plan to let Commissioner Pappas run on a hold, just so we could appoint her husband in her place. I have heard many comments that the board wants to try and run the sheriff's department. All of this is nonsense, and frankly, it's offensive to me. There are six commissioners up here with various backgrounds, life experience, and skill sets. And I hope the public does not misinterpret the fact that we work well together as a sign that we are spineless and easily manipulated. The idea that one or two commissioners can run or influence the board in the wrong direction is preposterous. And the idea that we are somehow conspiring against the public is ludicrous. The sheriff is an elected official with far more authority than a commissioner. And is completely responsible for operating his department. Of course, the board and the sheriff seek a cooperative relationship for the benefit of the people of Shewaian County. But there is no scenario where the commissioners can force the sheriff to do anything he doesn't want to do. I have asked about the options to this appointment, perhaps a special election. And while this is available, it would be extremely costly for this Shewaian taxpayer. And in my opinion, it's not cost-effective for a roughly one-year appointment. I've been contacted by, what I estimate, nearly three hundred people in the last three weeks regarding this appointment. There have been accusations against multiple candidates, and there have been accusations against the people making accusations. We live in a small town, many of these people are family, friends, people I care about, trust, and respect. Unfortunately, as with most disagreements and personal conflicts, everyone believes in their heart that they are right. And all of them are right from their position and perspective, which is why resolution is rarely attainable. Personally, I want all the people that took time to reach out to me to know that I heard you. I believe you, I listened, and I tried to understand. I value your input. And in several cases, I genuinely have advised. We as commissioners in a small town are sometimes forced to make decisions that may hurt those we care for. And that is not an easy thing for a sincere person to do. For myself, if my decision today is not what you would hope for, I am truly sorry. Understand, it's not all up to you. It's not my personal decision to make. We are the voice of the many that we represent. As the only veteran on the board, many veterans in the community view me as their voice at the county. A good majority of the three hundred people I mentioned that have contacted me regarding this appointment are veterans. Here are some quick notes about them. Shewaian County has more veterans than any other county in northern Michigan, near over twenty percent of the population. They and their spouses and families have a nearly eighty-five percent older turnout. As a voting body, they do not forgive, they do not forget, and they can easily sway elections and make or break the candidate. About ninety-five percent of these, ninety-five percent of these veterans are supportive of the appointment of Mr. Claremont. Because of his highly decorated and expensive military service. Mr. Claremont is one of the candidates endorsed by the Shewaian Republican Party. While the candidates all seem well-qualified, Mr. Claremont's extensive experience with county government gets him the edge of that category, in my opinion. The allegations of wrongdoing against Mr. Claremont are certainly concerning. Unfortunately, they are from many years ago, and they are in a different leadership environment, and that's difficult to quantify. As I have mentioned already, many of the accusations made against all involved are concerning. In my opinion, everyone deserves to be heard, everyone deserves to be believed, and everyone deserves to be respected. My message is clear to all, regardless of who was appointed or elected today. I will not allow this board to be bullied or manipulated by anyone. I will defend the sovereignty of the sheriff's position and all the other elected officials. My message to our staff is if you feel bullied or discriminated against anytime by an elected official at that number. We need to report that if he means some speech losses, you know, out, please. Okay, lastly, I am happy to speak to anyone regarding my decision today, if you'd like more details on how I arrived at.
Anyone else? Yeah, I I, you know, a lot of people, I assume, lots of process and so forth, and I. And 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 just on my part, I think I tried to listen to the people, I tried to, or I did go to several uh town shows, so I included them. Point is, try to do my. Most of all, the presence.
Michigan Osman? Michigan St. Sir? Michigan Williams? Michigan Wallace? Michigan Whitefield? Michigan Lema?
Thank you, guys.